Welcome to the Town of Bluff Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Tonight is a public hearing and then are followed by a regular meeting. The date is Wednesday, December 4th, 2024. The time is 5:01 PM. We're meeting in person at the Bluff Community Center and also virtually. So let's begin with a roll call of Planning and Zoning Commissioners. This is Amanda Podmore, Chair.
Marcia Hindfahl.
Malia Collins.
Brian Whitney.
Welcome, Brian. Welcome, members of the public and Town Council. Okay, so we're going to open the public hearing first. I'd like to go through a couple of rules and procedures for the evening, and then we will start with subdivision ordinance hearing and then the RV ordinance hearing. So to begin, just a couple of protocols for this evening. First, if you'd like to make an in-person comment, please fill out the form if you have not done so yet. We will then randomize the order of comments. It looks like right now we just have a couple. If you are online and would like to make a virtual comment, please drop your name in the chat or else notify us in some way so we can then randomize the online commenters. We'll start with public in-person comments and then virtual public comments. We'll ask that you state your name, a full name for the record, and you can make a comment up to three minutes in length. You can ask for additional two minutes, which I can grant. We won't be responding to comments this evening, but know that we are listening very closely. We're taking notes, we're recording, we're having minutes taken. So your comment will be heard and responded to as we're finalizing the ordinances. If you are stating a comment that someone else has already shared, you're welcome to just say that you agree with that comment instead of restating the entire comment. And then lastly, we just ask that people treat each other with kindness, treat each other as you would like to be treated, as we will not tolerate any verbal abuse this evening. And lastly, anonymous comments cannot be accepted. So with that, I'll give a quick rundown of the two ordinances. The full ordinances are available online. Some of you have them printed already, good for you. Just a couple big takeaways from each ordinance. First of all, the draft subdivision ordinance is being updated because this is required by a House and Senate bill that passed the Utah State Legislature in 2023. And to come into compliance with those laws, we have until December 31st of this month to update the subdivision ordinance of our town. Luckily, when the state passed this bill, they appropriated funding for small towns like Bluff. And so we had a group called the Hanson Group write the entire ordinance process ordinance for us and walk us through the process. So we have a really beautiful product in hand. The big, the point of updating the subdivision ordinance was really to clarify who the authoritative bodies are and to streamline the process and make it so that the developer doesn't have to go through iteration after iteration after iteration. It kind of caps the number of times the developer can go back and forth with the town. So it does designate the Planning and Zoning Commission as like the preliminary review body. The Town Council would be the final review in some cases. And then as the Hanson Group worked with us on refining this sort of template subdivision ordinance, we just wanted to let you all know that they, you know, they would say, okay, well, most cities, you know, require all subdivisions to have green grass. We were like, get that out of there. Most subdivisions require extensive lighting. We were like, no, we're a dark-skinned town. Most subdivisions require paved roads. We said we can allow gravel roads. So we tried to make the ordinance fit with the nature of Bluff while also meeting the code requirements. That's it on the subdivision ordinance. Oh, here's the, here's the graphic of the review cycle. Just showing that when the town receives the application, they can have a pre-application meeting that's optional. And then the review cycle in which the town checks for like conformity and a correct application can only go through four cycles, after which the Planning and Zoning Commission will review it. And it just gives us, it gives like amounts of time so that the process doesn't drag on too long. That's all on the subdivision ordinance. The RV ordinance was not something mandated by state law. This was something we have been talking about for years in just thinking about how do we both promote like affordable housing in town, maintain the character of Bluff, but also maintain public safety when it comes to RVs? And so we drafted an RV ordinance that provides for public safety, minimal environmental impact, allowing for living spaces during construction processes, the use of recreational vehicles in appropriate districts. Can you add anything, please? Thank you. It allows for economic and affordable housing opportunities, allows RV parks to continue to be a very important piece of our tourism-based economy in Bluff. And lastly, we wanted to make sure that mobile homes and mobile parks are allowed in Bluff. That wasn't currently in our zoning code, and that was just an oversight on our park. And so we wanted to make sure that that was allowable. The, a couple of things I wanted to point out that the RV ordinance allows. You'll notice in there that it has the word THOW, T-H-O-W. That means tiny house on wheels. There's been some questions about tiny houses in Bluff, so we wanted to make sure that was in there. It does allow RVs and THOWs to be parked for up to one night on a residential street or alley. So this is if somebody is driving through town and they want to park somewhere, they can do so. Allows again, as I mentioned, for RV parks and mobile homes to be used as a dwelling when you, someone is constructing a building for up to one year in length. It allows for non-functioning or non-operable RVs and THOWs to be used as storage sheds on your private property as long as you meet setbacks. It allows that if you have a valid short-term rental permit, you can use an RV, a mobile home, or a THOW as long-term residence, satellite bedroom, or short-term rental as long as you can meet safety and health requirements. Does allow private driveways to be used to host RVs or THOWs on a temporary basis. It allows unoccupied RV vehicles to be parked on private parcels of land, but we've put some density restrictions in there so as to avoid too much clutter. And then again, as I said, it allows mobile home parks. The ordinance itself has a table that's really beautiful that's divided by our different zones. So agricultural, commercial, residential, factory-industrial. And it says any limitations on the number of RVs, things like that. So we encourage you to reference that table. And then it, in particular, to RV parks are, we wanted to just encourage general standards across RV parks. So we put in things like you must meet, you know, septic approval. It requires a perimeter, like a buffer around the perimeter of the property, some open space. But generally, our sentiment is that the RV park owners know what they're doing. It's up to them to decide how many RVs they want to put in a park based on septic and setbacks. So, and then I think one more. A couple of things that we wanted to prohibit or change is disallowing RVs that are permanently parked in the public right-of-way and then any new RV parks in residential zones. And then lastly, the enforcement section of the document, I will say, still needs to be polished a bit by our town attorney, but generally violations can be punishable as a Class C misdemeanor, and the ordinance would allow for the imposition of a fine for any violations. With that, I think that wraps up my quick summary of the two ordinances. So do you want?
I just wanted to say out loud, I just have one correction for a gentleman who's joining us on Zoom tonight, Mr. Farrell. I see that you're there. And this is Marcia, and I just wanted to let you know that I was responding with kind of the wrong picture in my head. So just so you know, tonight's solar discussion will be during our meeting, and it will be decided here in our meeting after the public hearing. So I misled you into thinking that the public hearing would refer to it when I meant that we would be discussing the solar request at our regular meeting. Sorry about that, Mr. Farrell.
So, so Mr. Farrell, we'll probably get to that around 6:00 PM, but we can't, we can't be certain of the timing.
Okay, no, no problem. I appreciate you letting me know. And I'm just here working in my office, and I'll just keep right on working until you tell me you're ready.
Thank you very much. Sorry about that.
No, no problem. Thank you.
Taken away.
Okay, so with that, we will go ahead and start with public comment for the subdivision ordinance. Malia, how many folks do we have?
So far, we have one on the signup sheet. Does anyone else want to comment on subdivision? Okay, so in that case, we have Doug.
My name is Doug Harris, and I just have a general comment on the subdivision ordinance. I actually have to confess, I haven't read it all. I glanced through it briefly. I don't know much about subdivision ordinances, but what I have noticed in Bluff is that there is very little housing opportunities for low-income people. And I was just, wanted to encourage any document or anything related to development of land for subdivision that it be made as less cumbersome as possible. The more cumbersome it is, it would make development more expensive and more difficult. It sounds like you've already done some things to make things easier, which I'm glad to hear. But just generally, I'd like to encourage that we make things as easy as possible while still maintaining, you know, good standards for the community. So that's basically my comment.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any other in-person comments on the subdivision ordinance? Okay, let me see. Are there any online folks that would like to give a comment on the subdivision ordinance? Okay, we will go ahead and move on to the hearing for the RV ordinance. Malia, have you done the randomizer?
I have done the randomizer.
Okay. Who's our first contestant?
Eric Dastrop. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your last name.
I'm Eric Dastrop. I'm just kind of mulling through my mind of this RV ordinance, and I appreciate the setbacks and the things of that nature. I'm just thinking about the several RVs that are in this town that are on lots that there is no way that they can develop that lot and build on it and how the response is going to be to that situation. So I guess that's my question.
Thank you. We have a request for clarification.
I just wonder if you're saying, do we allow the RV to stay on a small lot instead of development? Is that kind of what you're asking?
Well, the statute or the ordinance could develop or adopt. Do I need to go back up there?
Yes, please, just because it'll, I'm, I'm sorry. I just wanted clarification. I didn't want to.
The ordinance, as I understood it, was they were allowed for one year on the lot if it was under construction. And it didn't say anything about allowing it to be on a lot that there was no possibility of construction.
And I believe, okay, I understand your question now. Do you want to clarify or just wait and talk about it after?
Yeah, I think we'll discuss this as a commission. Thank you so much for that comment.
Okay. I, I do understand the question. Okay.
Okay, who's up next?
Perfect. And up next, we have Carrie Harris.
Hi, I'm Carrie Harris. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I've reviewed the RV ordinance, and I'm the owner, one of the owners of the Cadillac Ranch RV Park. So my comments are with RV Park part of the ordinance. And my comments tonight aren't a criticism of your efforts. I appreciate all that you've done in just an effort to help improve the ordinance. I don't think the ordinance should be approved as it stands for the following reason. On page six, section five, Standards for Recreational Vehicle Parks and Mobile Homes, Part 1A states, recreational vehicle parks may include tiny homes, modular homes, repurposed material converted to habitable structures, as an example, shipping containers, and mobile homes. And then subsection I states, the RV or tiny home on wheels must be operable, which you've stated must be able to move under its own power and maintains current license and registration as required. So when you list what the park may include, it says tiny homes, modular homes, repurposed material converted, and mobile homes. You left RVs off the list. You also left tent camping off the list. And so when it's not on the list, it implies that you may not be able to have it. And so there's also a lot of other industry standard types of facilities that are in RV parks, and it's constantly changing. It's very fluid. So some of the examples of how that industry is changing right now is RV parks are including glamping tents, yurts, treehouses, group cabins. And just, it's always just very fluid. And so the type of offerings in an RV park are generally a business decision. And so it would not be appropriate for the Planning and Zoning Commission to be talking about that business decision. So as a business, we're in it for our guests to have a great experience and for our business to succeed. It's not in the best interest of our business to put in anything that would diminish from the guest's experience. So I'd like to ask that you either remove the statement of what an RV park can include because it's potentially too restrictive and not allowing us to keep up with industry standards, or to include the wording "may include but is not limited to." And so that's my comment. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. We always appreciate a well-written, thought-out comment. Thank you.
Do you want to leave a copy up?
Perfect. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Okay, Malia, anybody next?
That's everybody I have on my list.
Okay, would anybody else who is here in person like to make a public comment about the RV ordinance? Okay, would anybody online like to make a comment about the RV ordinance? Going once, going twice. Okay, I will close the public comment for the draft RV ordinance. Thank you so much, everybody. Our next steps are to begin discussion about any changes we'd like to make to the ordinances at our meeting following this meeting and then again at our meeting on, our regularly scheduled meeting on December 18th. Once the Bluff Planning and Zoning Commission recommends the ordinances in their final draft, we will send them to the town attorney to review and to the Town Council to approve. Anything else from the commission?
I would just like to really thank the people who have spoken. One of the things that happens to us reading this over and over is we forget things like the word RV in the middle of the RV ordinance. So sometimes it takes that. It takes someone saying, did you really mean you can keep them there or you can't keep them there? We will double-check. So those are the things that are so important to us that someone else reads them and tells us what they saw. So thank you, because now we can talk about all of that.
Agreed, yes. And thank you to folks who have previously submitted comments on the RV ordinance. Those are also under consideration, so. With that, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing on the two, the two ordinances.
Second.
Second by Malia. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
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 Wonderful. Okay, well, thank you. We will now begin our regularly scheduled meeting.
And you're welcome to listen to us, too.
Anybody need a second or?
Let's go. And I didn't even have to use my time's up, so you're all so good.
Okay. So we're now in our regularly scheduled Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We will now open a public comment period in which folks can make a public comment on anything up to three minutes in length. Would anybody like to share a public comment? Would anybody online like to share a public comment?
Jennifer magically switched from the other end.
Okay, I will close the public comment period. Thank you. Move on to item three, which is approval of our meeting minutes from our November 20th regular planning and zoning meeting. Okay, I will scroll down until I see a comment.
Looks like Marcia had a wonderful comment.
So under Old Business, item one, update from Town Council, Marcia corrected the sentence in the third paragraph to read. Postponed addressing the airport overlay. Postponed addressing the airport overlay. Further questioning and discussion indicated that the airport overlay draft developed by the San Juan County Planning and Zoning Board many years ago was never approved by the county.
I did, the, the original sentence made it sound like something we had done, and we hadn't, but I remembered when I was on county planning that we had done one. So it was shown to me that they never adopted it.
Sounds good to me. Sounds good. Continuing to scroll down. Under New Business, item five, the end of the paragraph was changed to say, discussion included future enforcement options for applications presented after the fact. That seems like an accurate representation.
Yeah, we've, we've had a couple of things come to us for approval after they've been done, and we need more direction with our attorney, et cetera. So we went ahead and did that one, but the future holds.
Great. Any other comments or changes on these minutes?
I motion to approve them as they were edited.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion passed. Minutes are approved with four ayes. Okay, up next, item four, under Old Business, item A is an update from the Town Council. Can I invite Luanne Hook to use a microphone? Either, you can either.
All I need to say is it was only last night's meeting. And last night I was at the UDOT Trail Meeting in Moab. I didn't have time today to review it, so I'll update you next week.
Okay.
Unless you have any questions, because there are a couple of other comments here. And I can't remember what we did last night.
Did you drink heavily during the meeting or?
For, for folks online, in case you can't hear, that there's not any substantive updates from the Town Council meeting last night, Luanne will get back to us at our next meeting for further updates.
Thanks.
Okay, Old Business, item B is an enforcement update. This is just noting that we have an ongoing need to determine how we can better enforce our ordinances in town. And the, the most recent request for support in that regard is that we have been receiving, we've received a land use clearance and a sign application permit after the action was taken. So we retroactively granted a land use clearance and a sign permit. And we want to know how we can discourage that from happening in the future. So I've sent an email to the town hoping we can organize and meet a discussion in the new year. So that's all the update I have. Okay. Item C, discussion and vote on draft subdivision ordinance approval. In advance of this meeting, we, we put space in the agenda both to discuss the subdivision ordinance and potentially approve it, knowing that we have an expedited timeline that that subdivision ordinance must be approved by the end of 2024. So in terms of comments we've received, I'd like to hear what commissioners are thinking. So we have not received any online comments about the subdivision ordinance. The only one we received today was from Doug Harris, who left about making sure that we don't preclude any low-income housing opportunities and that we make the process as less, least cumbersome as possible, which sounds like we have, the process already does that because it reduces the amount of times in which the application can be reviewed. But what do folks think? Marcia?
I would agree that Mr. Harris's comment is timely to this, and it's something we discuss a lot. We discuss it under the guise of affordable housing. We discuss it under the guise of small-town life that you don't want rules that are, you can't enforce here or don't want. So what I would say to this is I believe the draft that we have does two things. One, it does all the necessary process put on us by state law and other subdivision norms. But I think we did a good job, or hope we did, of doing what Mr. Harris suggested and what we talked about, which is keeping it simple and straightforward for where we live. So I think that we've done as good a job as possible. There will be something that comes up. There will always be something that it's like, oh, you should have said the grass goes on the left or something, but.
No grass.
We, no grass, the gravel goes on the left. So we're going, you know, you're bound to find something. But I am pleased with the work that the Hanson's did to give us this draft and the work that we did to make it our own. So I like what we're doing. And I think Mr. Harris is right to try and not put so much on the people that can't do something. However, I think the neighborhood counts where you say, don't worry, we're trying to do it and protect our neighbors.
Malia, would you like to share anything?
I agree with Marcia. I will make a motion to approve the subdivision ordinance or, and send it on to Town Council.
Well, second, Brian was up there.
I'll open it up for discussion. Brian, would you like to share anything?
Oh yeah, my only thought in addition to what Marcia was saying is that I think also that Mr. Harris's comment was, I agree that it was also timely in the fact that I think that the entire process of having to update the subdivision code per the Utah State Legislature is also about being developer-friendly. So I would say that I don't, I, I actually do think that it's set up to allow for, you know, ease to move through the process of, of development. So that's all I would say is that. So that's all I would say is that I think it is inherent in the, in what we got from the group, so.
Thanks, Brian. I'll add to the discussion that seeing that we only received one comment on the subdivision ordinance and we feel it's already addressed in the ordinance, I'm also comfortable with the motion. Any, any other discussion? Marcia?
Call the question.
Okay, I'll call the motion. All in favor of approving the subdivision ordinance or recommending the subdivision ordinance for town council approval, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, none opposed, the motion passes. We will go ahead and send on the final draft to town council for their review and ultimate approval. Thank you so much, everybody. And thank you especially to the Hanson group who did all that beautiful work for us.
Agreed.
They, for the record, they have sent us materials for how the, templates for the adoption of the ordinance and everything that we can use, so. Okay. I'll move on to item four D, which is discussion of the draft RV ordinance. Open it up to commissioners.
I don't think it's ready. I think that the comments helped to prove that, the fact that we have some statements that don't entirely make sense. So I would like to go back and spend a little bit more time taking those comments and putting them into the ordinance.
Brian, go ahead.
Yeah, I would, I agree with Malia. I also, I appreciate the comments that we got, particularly Carrie's question about allowing a more fluid definition of what RV parks may allow. I mean, not, I mean, yes, missing the word RV was probably a small oversight, but also I would say that it, it does make sense to me. That comment makes a lot of sense to me of leaving that question of what the offering should be to the business owners as it is sort of a, as we've learned as being in a tourism town, like how people travel and stay changes constantly and there's always a new thing, so I definitely agree with that comment of opening it up to the business owners to sort of define that.
Yeah, I think that, that's aligned with how we've generally approached the RV park standards and the ordinance is letting the business owners, where the experts decide.
Yep.
I think we said that a few times as we got into each section we go. We better wait till the park owners tell us, yeah. So that was good. I particularly like some sort of line that Carrie alluded to, which is you can have RVs, thousands, mobile homes, and more, you know, and just leave the and more to the ever-changing future. Yeah. That's one thing. The other thing I wanted to address is Mr. Daystrip, is it? Mr. Daystrip's comment and that, not back and forth here, but just at our table to say, did we not say that you can live in your RV on your lot? Is that correct? Did we not want, I mean, I.
Yeah, that's a good question. That seems like it should be a baseline, right?
Right, and I, I really believe we wanted that, that beyond the fact that somebody can be under construction and just live there, are you finding it?
Yeah.
Okay, here she goes.
So four, one, D.
Okay.
Any RV, mobile home, or thou used as a long-term residence or rental satellite bedroom and/or short-term rental with valid STR permit must have access to utility connections and septic permissions from the property owner and be subject to setbacks.
Okay, so in that, we are saying you can live in a blah, 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 and you can as long as it is hooked up safely and septic and doing whatever. So that if you have a small lot and a large trailer, you know, a large RV, you'd like to live there, go for it. Okay, I wanted to make sure that was still good.
And that is under all zones.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to address in that same comment was the idea of a lot that is undevelopable. And what's happened is this town was divided up into lots back in the prehistoric times and there were not ordinances doing measurements the way we hope to do them now. So we have lots that are definitely too small to qualify as lots in our zoning ordinance, but if you own it, you're allowed to build on it because it was your lot to begin with. So I just want to sort of express that I don't believe we've cut off anyone's ability to do something on their lot. If, if it came, if push came to shove, the question does become things like, I can't meet the setbacks, so I need a variance, which we do not have, but we have a way, but we can, I want people to understand if they own a tiny lot in this town, that we can help them figure out a way that they can put their house or building, you know, their, use their property. So yes to RVs being lived in, we know that, and then totally separate, I think we can develop most lots because they're, they're called non-conforming lots. You know, and that's, that's, you know, and that's fine, I understand the confusion, trust me. Okay, now, beyond our control is health and safety through the, through the septic and county and state septic rules. We can't go there, but within our purview, you know, it's good. Bluff was always exempt when I was on county planning and zoning before we incorporated. Bluff was exempt from the half acre lots stuff because we had towns, water, and septic separate instead of individual wells, which precluded building septic within 200 feet of a well, of a culinary well. I think those are in the numbers, I can't remember. I believe that the idea is even if you have a small lot, you can make something work and then septic has to come in and say it's safe. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to get off on a.
No, correct.
That was great.
Well, we've put some comments in the draft, like adding, potentially adding non-conforming lot section or clarifying that and then addressing Ms. Harris's, Ms. Harris's comment as well. I think, I'm wondering if we need a work session next week or if we could do all the work at our next meeting? How do, what do folks think?
Well, it's pretty early right now. We can just keep going a little bit maybe and then be done.
Everyone's fine with me. I have a question.
Sure.
Oh, sorry.
We can answer your question first.
Well, yeah, we could do a little more work tonight and then maybe finish it at our next meeting.
And to pass it along, yeah.
Marcia and I can work on it.
But it sounds like all of us want to do a final.
Yes.
Question about, we have the standards applicable to all zones and not all of that information is in my beautiful table. Should I take all of that information and also put it into the table? Should, because currently everything in the table is not listed anywhere else, I believe. I could be wrong on that. Would it make it easier to read if all information was in the table? My concern is that the table would just become huge in that case where it's already really large.
I like it separate.
Instead of, yeah, okay.
I like, I like the table to say where and what. And I like, once you do where and what, what are the standards I meet?
Okay.
Like I can have three RVs there, but what do I have to do with those three RVs? So if you say, check the table for what you can have, check the standards for how you have.
Okay.
Because you're right, the table would go.
Right, yeah.
I will note that the definition of RV parks in the ordinance includes RVs and camping, and so I think to some extent that's already covered, but I think we should be sure to add it to that. Section five, one, A, I believe she said.
Yeah, I wrote it down, five, page six, section five, one, eight. I'm just watching.
Yeah. Anything else we want to address tonight in this? I, I think the non-conforming lot will take us all, we'll need to read that.
Agreed.
Yeah, but it was an excellent point and it's exactly what we said. Someone out there will see something we didn't write correctly.
Brian, anything else you want to address tonight in the RV ordinance?
Nope, that sounds like a good start. I need to read, I would like to read over that non-conforming stuff more.
Great, so let's all reread it. It sounds like Leo and Marcia will get together one time more in person. They've done Herculean efforts to work on this ordinance. And then, and then we can review it at our next meeting on the 18th.
Perfect. Good job, everybody. Thanks, everybody.
Wonderful. Okay, we are ready to move on to item five, new business. Item A is a land use clearance application for Coral Sands solar installation, so Mr. Jonathan Farrell, welcome and thank you for patiently waiting with us.
No problem.
So let me, apologies, I need to pull up the folder, but do you want to just give an overview of the project for the public while, while I'm pulling up that folder?
Yeah, you bet. So this is another Rural Energy for America program grant recipient. Coral Sands RV applied for the grant last year. It was awarded. And so the plan is just to put solar panels on their garage shed structure and then also in two other carport structures that will be along the, the edge of the RV park. It'll be on the, the southern edge, I think. And so it's, it's just the construction of, sorry, excuse me, the northern edge. So it's just the construction of the, the two carports. And, and those will just be frame structures that then the solar modules will be placed on top of. It's in an area in between the trees along the north edge of the property. There's a restroom facility kind of in between there and so it'll just provide an area that will be shaded for the pedestrian traffic that will kind of go along the edge of the park there and then also for vehicles that are coming in to visit at the main office, for instance, and, and, and go to the business office.
Apologies, took me a second to pull up the correct visual, but thank you for that overview. And we had had a question about setbacks.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll ensure that 15-foot setback on the, I mean, there's really just the farthest eastern carport structure that would even be close to that, that setback on the property line, but, but yeah, we'll, we'll ensure at least a 15-foot setback on that.
Thank you.
Do commissioners have any questions about the application? Marcia?
Just a general, just for clarification, all of the power generated from the solar will be strictly for the use by the park itself in terms of its power grid selling the power, doing whatever, it's all private.
Yeah, so that's a great question. So the, the reason why this diagram is actually as complicated as it is, is because the modules are broken up into 17 different solar systems. So there will be solar power provided to offset the usage by the main office and then there will be a smaller system that will offset the power usage at each one of the individual RV sites there on the RV park. So it can be completely a green energy RV park, both the energy used by the, the business owners and the main office and also that used by the tenants.
Wow, that's awesome.
Thank you for clarification. Can I just pull up the?
Sorry, Mike.
Sorry, sharing this one. Okay. Commissioners, any other questions or comments on the application?
If I may, Erin, did we clarify that everybody's paid for the things we talked about tonight? Thank you.
Okay, so for the record, the land use clearance application fee was paid. Okay. So the setbacks, we can annotate this with what you sent today and what you said online. Any, any other concerns with the application?
I move for approval of the LUC for a solar, solar installation at the Coral Sands Park.
Second.
Nice second, oh. It's hard online to get in there.
Second by Malia. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Brian go first.
No, it's all right, thank you, I appreciate it, but I still say aye.
For the record, Malia said aye.
Oh, my goodness.
The motion passed unanimously with four ayes. So thank you, Mr. Farrell, I will go ahead and sign this tomorrow morning and send a copy to you and, and Carrie Harris as well and the county.
No, Pam.
Pam, sorry, Pam. There's, we're too many RV parks today.
Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for joining us tonight, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell, sorry for the confusion earlier.
No problem.
Sorry for confusing my RV parks. Okay, going back to the agenda. Item five B is items for next agenda. I think our main one being the RV ordinance review.
Also, I noticed the dates for next year's meetings. Does that need to be on the agenda?
No, we should finish it tonight, isn't that on tonight?
It's not on tonight's.
Oh. Oh, I know. You wrote the list of them and we all said, looks good, I just asked about the.
We can, yeah, we can approve the dates administered, like, we could just do that over email because we already.
We already said we wanted to switch to Thursdays, but then town has to approve our.
We should actually approve it before you approve it.
Okay.
Oh, there you go.
So town. Okay. And we're waiting to post the San Juan record notice for our meeting dates because we might be changing platforms, which brings us to our item six other. Erin, do you want to come up and talk about the meeting platform?
So my apologies to Amanda because I sent this over, like, way too late. So the town is currently undergoing a change in our IT service provider, so we've been using Netcourse for the last couple of years, we're moving to Galaxy IT. I'm really excited for this change because we're paying for a service that's actually going to be able to protect the town a little bit better. Cybersecurity is important. But because of this, they're evaluating our current system, which includes all of you. I know we've been operating in a system in which you all have used Google, you use Google Docs, you have a town associated email that's on our domain, but unfortunately we kind of have these dual systems. And so it is my hope, and this is something, you know, we're going to be here Friday, so like no rush or anything, but it is my hope that we can maybe talk about shifting you all to a Zoom platform. So the town is discussing this as well. We've been using Google Meets because it's very friendly, it's friendly for, this is like really bad feedback, maybe I can just like. How about that? Is that better? Cool. Okay, fabulous. So we've been using Google Meets because it's friendly for the public, but with that being said, we don't want to maintain this Gmail suite so you all can actually access it because it's a separate cost that's not covered under our current system. I know you guys use Google Drive a lot, which is great because we want those collaboration tools, but my hope and recommendation, lots of learning, it's a big learning curve, but we move to Zoom for all of our public meetings, we'll pay for that subscription. I know a lot of people through the pandemic had been using that platform. It is not bulletproof and I understand that, but I know that it is much more friendly than Teams and I will not force you to go to Teams. But for your, for your sharing platform, this is going to get a thumbs down for me, it is my hope that we can move to like Share Drive. And so what you would be using is still a virtual. Um, and so what you would be using is still a virtual component, so you'll like log on. So Malia, actually, in her role, um, with us as project manager, has been sharing a lot of documents with me. You'll see tonight, Malia, I was making a lot of changes, so it'll still be a collaborative function. It'll kind of be in that Word view more than a Google Docs view. Um, but the hope would be to transfer all of your data over. Um, the good news is that it's now all secure and protected, which, again, very excited that we have this new company because NetForce hasn't been backing anything up. And so that means all of your documents could just disappear, and that really scares me. So, I know it's a big change. Um, we're also moving to a new domain, so I think we've been talking about that. We are required by law to move to a .gov domain. Um, so they're going to kind of do this all in one fell swoop. I am going to see how far we can get on Friday. I'm not just going to say bam, your Google Drive is done, but probably over the course of the next four to six weeks, we're probably going to phase that out. I promise I will work with you to make sure that you feel secure in the new platform. Um, I don't want to like rip and tear you away from your processes, but I was going to come in and be like, hey, are you guys okay with this? But the more that I'm thinking about it, you're going to be on our platform, I will help you through it. Um, but I did want to give you that heads up because it is a fairly significant shift in your processes. So with that, questions, comments, concerns that I could share with them Friday as we're making these transitions?
I, I don't have any specifics because we have to see what this is. So I love that you're working this out and I don't have to. What I'm going to ask is, pretty much the old lady of the group, is that when this happens, you're available to get the start going of getting us on there. Um, I, I learned Google. I feel so good about that. I can Google Doc my way to anywhere. You want to switch me, teach me. So all I'm asking is to be included in anything we-
Hundred percent. We had that same concern from council. Um, a hundred percent, I have that same concern because this is a new platform for me too. Um, we, I do feel, third, fourth time saying this, I feel much more secure with our new IT service provider. And that will be a huge point for them, that either they're providing the tools in one-on-one, or they're directing us to resources. Um, and they, I've already had some conversations with them, that, you know, we can't just be thrown into it, so I'm with you.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll be able to migrate all of them, um, which is such a relief, and he indicated to me that it won't be an issue. Um, we'll, like I said, I'm not just going to like flip the switch Friday, um, but I will probably ask them to start migrating some stuff. And so, um, I will keep you posted. It's not going to disappear, but probably some of the initial stuff will kind of migrate over, and then we will probably have a final flip switch date. But the great news is all of it is secure. It's really important for us, for grandma policies, for everything else. And, I mean, Google Docs is great. You guys work really well together. You don't just go and delete documents. But we're now going to have the ability that we have the backups, um, and I think that's really important for the continuity of the town. So I appreciate your understanding, and I'm so sorry to rip and tear you away from it. Trust me, I agree with you. Drive sucks, but we will figure it out, so.
All good.
I know it is not super friendly.
So, just a note for planning and zoning, commissioners, anticipating this migration, make sure any files you're adding to Drive are in the Bluff PZ Drive folder?
Yes.
I think we do a good job of that, but I, I might just double-check my files. Um, question for you, Erin. My concern is just that we need to post this in the Samon Record in a timely, post our meeting dates in a timely manner. Can we post without putting the, the virtual link?
Okay, I would say yes. I'd say go to the town website, and that will get you, because we will always have those links posted. So if you can list our homepage to say, you know, go there, and, um, you'll be routed to the meeting, or, you know, there'll be a link to the meeting. I think that's the best way to go, um, if you guys are comfortable with that.
But the, the Bluff website's also going to change, right?
Um, yeah.
We can always repost in Samon Record.
Yeah, we're going to have to repost ours. Can you hold off, do you think you can hold off till Monday to post it?
Well, you all need to approve our dates anyway, but I'm just trying to think for safety.
No, this is good. So yeah, uh, Town of Bluff is moving to www.townofbluffutah.gov. We will maintain our .org domain because we don't need anyone spoofing off of it. So everyone will still be rerouted. All your emails are going to kind of like continue to forward for a while, so those aren't just going to evaporate. Um, but yeah, as we're talking through next year, and, you know, as you're communicating with folks, we'll need, it's a huge process, but I will help you. I, we will handhold, um, like all of our forms, everything on the town, like, there's a ton to it. Um, so I'm, I'm right there with you, if not just a half step ahead. Um, I think the good news, though, for us is that, so we were required by law to do this by December 31st. I'm going to keep that for our goal, but it, the deadline moved back. We've got six extra months, so. We'll still be in good shape, but it is a huge communication. It's communication to the public, so you can start spreading it. People go to .org and they're confused. But yeah, I, and then, yeah, keep asking the question because I'm sure there are plenty of things that I have not thought about yet, so. Cool.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I have one more question.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, thank, uh, thank you for not making us use Teams.
You're welcome.
Uh, question about, is there going to be like cybersecurity training involved with this?
Betcha.
Okay.
There's going to be quite a bit, actually, because we, we've got some gaps, which maybe in your next meeting, I will not be here, but, uh, maybe you guys can talk about, um, you're going to have your January conflict, conflict of interest forums. You're going to have officer positions. You're going to have the, just a outline of like annual trainings, which is like OPMa. It's going to have cybersecurity, um, and then probably like an offering of other things that I'm advising that all appointed and elected officials will be taking. Um, I'm thinking somewhere between, you know, two to three hours of elective, um, training that, you know, would be helpful for everyone. Um, one hour of at least land use specific.
Oh, nice.
But I'll write that to you in an email.
Thanks.
Okay, great. Marcia?
On my other list is a question for you and Amanda, and that is, are we then, I don't know what happened with the recommendation from P&amp;Z to the town council who all left and said, we would like to reappoint Marcia, and thank you, Ed, and I'm assuming-
That would have been a good update, huh?
Yeah.
They did, they approved.
We're having a great time here tonight. Okay. Marcia, you have been reappointed. We're so happy you're here tonight. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, at present, uh, we have a fifth seat that's currently open. Your bylaws don't spell out how we go about filling that, so we're working with legal counsel to fill that gap. We're asking you to operate as a four-member commission for the time being. We do recognize, and it was discussed in the meeting, that there's no tiebreaker, so if you have any major things that are going to be, you know, we'll come to that when we come to it.
Okay.
Um, we will, we, as in town council and you all, will be reevaluating planning and, not reevaluating, um, making some revisions to your bylaws because we, there are some gaps, right? So we, we talked about that last night. Um, would love to have that be something that we're working on in the next couple months or so.
Are you still out there telling people you're hiring, that you're looking for?
For the next week, no. It is my hope that council gets, um, direction by their meeting on December 17th, in which they would say, yes, we are hiring, or we're just going to appoint, or whatever. But right now, you, we're asking you to operate as a four member, and then we would probably reopen it officially to rece, that's my guess, is that we'll reopen it officially.
Well, I mean, because you will appoint, but you have to tell people you're still looking to appoint, so.
Holding pattern until we get the full-
Good, but it is on your list.
Yes, and that, that would have been a good, I should have, should have stepped up during that earlier.
It's fine, it's fine. I just, I have another question, but not for you, so that's fine. About that.
I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if I could, under other, follow up the rest of the sentence, and that is, we need amongst us to talk for a minute about who's doing what, because then things will get posted and sent out appropriately, like we got hung up this week. Brian was great. He stepped forward to, to post things. And then I said, wait a minute, you posted on the wrong, you know, bulletin board, which is fine. He didn't know. And so I just want to make sure all of that's covered for these next couple of weeks.
Brian, are you still there? I think you might have had to slip away for a patient.
Yeah, I'm back now. Always, always, it was a false alarm, but back now.
Um, so I think we're, so we're looking for a commissioner to step up to do the physical posting.
Right, I'm, I think I'm back to working with Kathleen. She sends me the minutes. I post the way I always did. That's one, that, which is fine. And then the physical posting, um, Melanie took over from Ed, and so we let it slide. What do we want to do?
So this is the physical posting of the agenda and the minutes?
Of the draft minutes? Yeah, in three places in town.
I'm hap, I'm happy to do that moving forward. We have a really nice printer at home, and I know where they all go now, so. And my wife was only involved in yesterday's because I, I didn't have the minutes before I went to work for a 12-hour shift. But moving forward, I think it's manageable for sure, and I will not involve my better half.
Brian, I was so pleased you guys did it. I have no problem.
No, 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 I just, that's just not her duty, you know? I can't, I can't, that's unpaid labor. That's not fair.
Okay, well, the bottom line is, if you would like to do it, that's wonderful.
Yeah, happy to do it.
And then we just need to give you the, teach you the places. Go, Erin.
I'll sneak up for half a second. I appreciate you guys working with us as we're going through like the bookkeeper, note taker transition. We do have those open positions. Um, I haven't had any applications for note taker yet, though. So those listening, we need a note taker, and it would be, it is posted that that role, our hope is that they can do the physical postings
Right.
for you, so I appreciate this interim. I'm really sorry that this is all kind of fallen, fallen back, but you guys are always flexible, and I appreciate it. And I'm off to a waterboard meeting, so.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm at your next meeting.
Good. Well, I think Kathleen and I have the minutes down, no problem, and I'm good with that. Um, but the physical posting on both is wonderful for Brian.
Sounds great.
Okay, we will run with that, and we'll need to in the new year, so thank you, Brian.
Yeah, and I'll just make sure that prior to, so the 18th is our next meeting, correct?
Correct.
So then I'll just make sure sometime during the next week, I touch base with everybody, probably through email or something. Or if I run into you, we'll just make sure I have everything squared away before the
Great.
Okay.
That deadline.
Sounds good.
Cool.
Okay, anything else under other this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
You beat me. I didn't even get it.
Did you second or?
No, I didn't second. I was just so blown away with the speed, sorry.
Okay, I seconded.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of adjourned the meeting, say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, meeting is adjourned at 6:04 PM. Thank you, everybody, for the great public hearing and regular meeting.